...council study session. And again, Mr. Thompson is excused. The first item on our agenda is to review the items on the agenda for the July 2 regular council meeting. So please refer to that document. I do have a request, a blue card to speak on, in support of, I think, oh, never mind. I don't think they wish to speak. This, Mr. Adams has filed a blue card in support of the Mesa Plays Parks Bond. Is that correct, Rich? I'm going to think that's a yes. Okay. So, looking at the agenda for Monday night, first several items are liquor license applications. Item five are purchase contracts.
Mayor, this, item one, you're pointing the...
Oh, thank you very much.
Recognize that, too.
Yes. As those who've been paying attention know, our last study session, we held an executive session, and there was the consensus that the conclusion of that was to put on our agenda for Monday night the appointment of Alicia Lawler as a city magistrate. Again, eminently qualified, we're very proud of our municipal court system. We have some really amazing judges, and Ms. Lawler is going to be an excellent addition to that. So we look forward to swearing her in. So, on Monday night, that's our, the first item, we'll actually swear her in, and she'll be appointed to the bench. Okay. Great. After that, we'll approve various liquor licenses, and then move on to purchase contracts under Agenda Item Five. Council, anything you'd like to pull off that agenda? If not, six are various resolutions. And seven is setting a public hearing for other resolutions. Eight is introducing various ordinances. And nine is taking comment on ordinances. Yes, Mr. Freeman?
Can I make a comment on 9A?
Of course.
Thank you. You know, I wanted to shout out to people who, the Flying Acres Historic District was established there and applicant in this process, and there's several people who worked really hard on that. Flying Acres is just west of Center Street, and I can't remember the exact, but 8th Street or 7th Place right in there, just west. But many who worked on that was Amy Mahoney, a resident who initiated the Flying Acres Historic District process. And helping with the document, documentary was also Lori Ocheski. She's a longtime proponent of historic preservation and work in that area. But they, they worked tirelessly for over a year to bring this to fruition. So I appreciate their efforts in District One, and this sets a great standard for other historic areas. And this was initiated back, the neighborhood back in World War II, 1948 time. So they were able to apply and get this consent. So I appreciate their work.
Thank you. Currently on the consent agenda, under Agenda Item Six, is putting various items on the ballot. And I know that we have some folks in attendance today in support of those questions. It includes the park bond, the public safety bond. I think we've already taken action to put home rule on the ballot, and the quarter cent sales tax for public safety personnel. But the, again, the things, we are adding on, on Monday various items to our ballot for the November election. Obviously, we have an August election, where we have city council decisions being made. But wouldn't surprise me, I, I wonder if we ought to leave it on the consent or take it off, just for the purposes of educating the electorate as to what we're going to be talking about?
Mayor, we would be glad, at the beginning of the meeting, just to kind of go through that list again or present it, and we can do that. So in addition to the two, as you mentioned, Mayor, the public safety, public, public safety bond projects, which we, we can certainly provide a list of those, the projects for the parks and cultural, we can provide that list. You mentioned, also in support of Mesa Plays is the item of Section 613, allowing for the expenditure of public funds in addition, above and beyond the 1.5 million. And then also, in support of Mesa Plays, the increase in the bed tax from 5% to 6%.
Yeah, I think, obviously, we want the voters to have as much information as possible. That's why we publish publicity pamphlets, and obviously, we can't advocate, now that it's going on the bond, or on the ballot, we can't campaign, but we can provide information.
You can't campaign here. You can campaign later.
Oh, right. Yes. And many of us can and will be campaigning and taking a position on these. But it seems appropriate that maybe at the outset of the meeting, we do have...
We'd be glad to do that, Mayor.
Provide the facts so that voters know what we're doing.
We can do that, Mayor. And then just, just another quick reminder, the sign ordinance is also included in 7A and 7B.
Okay. Right. And we've had several public hearings, public meetings on that, and I know it's gone through a big vetting process in the community, but it wouldn't surprise me if people have something to say about the sign ordinance as well. But currently, everything's off the consent, or on the consent agenda. All right? If that's, if we're done with that, then the next item on our agenda for this meeting is Item Two. That's to hear a presentation and provide direction on the proposed licensing of a structured sober living homes ordinance in Mesa.
We have present, we do have a presentation?
Yes, I think Tim and Charlotte are coming up.
I saw people leaving. Damn, I guess you're...
Welcome.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. How are you today?
Great.
Good. We're here to present our proposal for the structured sober living home ordinance. We've all worked very hard on that, and the Attorney's Office worked very hard on that, and we're here to present that today. The purpose of this ordinance that we're proposing is to establish a licensing process that's going to protect the residents and structure, of structured sober living homes from operators who fail to provide a supportive family-like living environment necessary to achieve and maintain the sobriety, to create operation standards in benefit of the residents, and protect the residents and surrounding neighbors from bad operators. The proposed ordinance is going to require many things, and this, we've given some of the highlights here. Licensing of the operators. The managers of the homes are going to be, have to be certified and provide that proof to us at the licensing office. They will be provide, they will be required to provide a good neighbor policy. They'll have an operation plan, including written intake procedures, relapse and discharge policy, and maintenance of noise abatement. And they will have house rules for all of the houses as well. The proposed ordinance will also require a house manager to be on premises 24/7. There'll be an annual fire inspection for the home. There is a revocation process for noncompliance. And they will have NARCAN onsite and for proper, and proper training for the staff, as well as all the CP, the managers will be required to have CPR and training as well. Applicability, the group residential group home for the, is actually a group residential home for the handicapped. There will be required to be alcohol-free and drug-free housing for individuals recovering from substance use and disorders. It is a supervised setting. It will promote independent living. It provides structured activities, and it's basically modeled, our ordinance is basically modeled after the Phoenix and the Prescott ordinance that's already in existence.
Mr. Smith, do you have something to add to that?
Yeah, Mayor and Council, I'll take a few more minutes and I'll, let me, and let me sort of unpack some of the thing on the, on that last slide on, we did, in large part, mimic this from the Prescott ordinance, and because I think it's a good example of following the state statute. They have also had it in effect for over a year, and so we're also looking at their actual implementation and the procedures. And let me just talk about, there's some questions regarding applicability. It will apply to existing homes, but in order to give those homes an opportunity to get the training and for their staff, and also for compliance, just like Prescott, we're going to mimic the fact that the ordinance will have a delayed effective date by 90 days, and then they'll have 60 days to submit their application. There's actually a typo in the current draft. We've caught that, and we'll fix that. But it'll be a 90, 60-day process, just, you know, that mimics what Prescott did. Also, on applicability, it's important to realize that this, this is applicable in the same sense of, our ordinance is applicable in other, in other situations. Let me just do it by example. We have, we have a separation requirement. The separation requirement's 1,200 feet. It only becomes applicable if you have six or more residents. That goes back to a definition of what is a group home for the handicap, and what is either in our code, and you'll see in other city codes, either directly or indirectly, a definition of what's considered family, and that's, the reason why you have that is because of federal law. The city of Mesa, that, that, the number in which the, the separation requirement becomes applicable is six. So you have to have six residents of, in the home. And, and just, you know, that's the same as Phoenix and Scottsdale and Chandler, they have the six. And, and there's some cities that have one number higher and some one lower, and so there's a little variability, and we'll also be looking at that in the future. And that's a different process, and that's within the zoning code, and there's, there's a fair amount involved in that. And so, so this, this ordinance, just like Phoenix's, will be applicable when there's six or more residents within the home. And so...
Mr. Smith, does that include the live-in manager?
So, it does not. And so you, you have to get six residents in the home, and then the, then the requirements, all the requirements kick in. And so, again, that's the same as Phoenix. Prescott has it, has the numbers...
Mr. Freeman asked of my question, so in other words, you have to have a, a home that has one, the minimum requirement is you have a live-in manager, and then if you have six or more residents that are receiving treatment in that home, then this ordinance would kick in?
I, I think of it first, so the predicate, how you phrase the question, so, and I'm probably being too precise. You first have six residents, then you have the obligation of having a house manager, separation of 1,200 feet, and all the other requirements that are up there, that all mimic Prescott. And, and, and so, and that, and that requirement of six is the same as other cities. Other cities don't have a structured sober living ordinance, they just have a separation requirement at, at six. We are adding the structured sober living. There's two other cities that add the structured sober living requirement. That's Prescott and Phoenix. We're becoming the third city. Phoenix is actually, doesn't actually begin until next month, so they actually haven't even implemented theirs. And so I just want to, I want, I want the, the public to sort of have a reasonable expectation. And this goes back to, you know, last week, when we talked about the fact that the Senate bill was really the long-term solution, because it offers a greater breadth, a potential applicability based off how the state adopts its regulations. And so...
What's the residency requirement for the Senate bill? How many?
It, it does not have one. And so it'll, the regs are yet to be written, and so I'm assuming that, that will be specified within the regulations.
Are you finished? Because we have a couple of questions for you.
Yeah.
Mr. Freeman, and then Mr. Luna.
I'll go first. So if they have less than six residents, then you're telling, the sober living residences could be next to each other?
Yes. In Mesa, in Phoenix, and then, and other cities?
I just want to understand that, as well as, is there a licensing process for if there's less than six residents?
No.
So unbeknownst to us, you could have sober living homes, less than six, next to each other on, on a given street?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
And, and that's why, you know, the cities and the league supported the Senate bill so much, is to look at, you know, a, a different solution that's going to be statewide, because that's true throughout, throughout all the cities.
I guess one last thing, this is kind of some gap coverage until the legislation kicks in and then it's written.
I think that's a fair way to describe it.
Mr. Luna?
I had a question on, what does it mean, good neighbor policy? Can you elaborate on that? What is...
Mayor, Vice Mayor Luna, the good neighbor policy will include items like making sure the residents, the, or the surrounding neighbors have contact information for the operator and the house manager. There'll be policies and procedures to address neighbors' concerns, and how they'll address those concerns. So that's some of the items that will be in there, basically addressing the neighbors' concerns, surrounding neighbors' concerns that they may have with the structured sober living home.
Just to follow up, so will you, will this be disseminated among the neighborhoods and the neighbors, the policy, contact information? Is this something that will be done voluntarily, or how does that happen? How will the residents around the sober living homes know that this is available to them, should there be any issues related to the homes?
Yeah.
So as part of the, Mayor, Vice Mayor Luna, as part of the application process, the structured sober living home operator would submit to the city their good neighbor policy? So if a neighbor has a question about the good neighbor policy, they could either ask the operator for the policy, or they could ask the city through a public, public records request for that, for that document.
Sorry, Jim, Charlotte. But this is only applicable to six or more residents, is what we're talking about.
Correct.
So, less than that, there's no inspection process, no compliance process, you don't even, we don't even know they really exist until there's an issue from the neighbors, unless that comes forward. So I'm looking enforcement or code compliance, is there, I mean, how are we going to, if it's six or more, how are we going to monitor that, other than an annual fire inspection? So I guess my question is, how are we going to monitor six or more residents?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, that'll go through my office. So once the application is done, then we'll be notifying those departments, and they'll be setting up processes and procedures within those areas to follow up and ensure that there's compliance. And any complaints that would come through our office would be forwarded as well to those departments, so that there would be an inspection process.
Okay. I, I know we're all trying to understand this and getting compliance with the federal law. I'm not comfortable with it personally, but that's just the way it's going to have to play out until the actual law is written and, and from this, at the state level. And I guess DHS is doing that?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks.
So the way we know if there's six or more is they self-report, right? So if a neighborhood sees activity that they think is evidence of, in excess of six residents, that would also trigger a, a call to the city, and we could investigate that?
Yes.
Now, Mr. Smith and, and Charlotte, I know we've, the Prescott ordinance is five or more, and the Phoenix ordinance is six or more?
We're...
And Prescott got to the number five by retaining an expert to do some additional research and prove up to the federal government that there's a legitimate reason for it to be five? Correct? And we've retained the same expert?
We are in the process of retaining that same expert, Mayor. So we will be, and we're looking at a few other, other, other items, too. I don't want to create, you know, an undue expectation. We are adopting the ordinance that is the same as Prescott, other than that one number. It is the same as, in effect, as the Phoenix with the same number. But we, we are in the process of retaining that expert, and we will look at both that and some other opportunities.
Okay. So that work needs to occur?
Yeah.
And, but there is the potential that we could come back and amend the ordinance if we feel like we have the justification to do that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the ordinance can't take place for another, we have a third, a 90-day period before it kicks in, and then a 60-day period in order to come into compliance. So we're still five months down the road. In the meantime, the clock is ticking on the state adopting the regs, or creating the regs, regulations, so that the state statute can then come in and preempt us and take over?
Correct.
Okay.
Right. And this, this ordinance will sunset soon as they adopt their regulations. They will, by law, they'll preempt us, and, and we have an automatic sunset provision within this ordinance, so we won't have to come back to eliminate this ordinance in the future.
Okay. All right. We do have, yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Heredia.
Do we have information on how Prescott is, because you mentioned, they've been doing this for a year, right? Is there any information how it's going for them?
We've, we've spent a tremendous amount of time with the Prescott City Attorney, have talked with them at length. I have, Charlotte have, and so that's also why, yes, they've implemented it. We've, we've gotten a lot of feedback from them, and so that's, that's why we've gone with mimicking Prescott ordinance. Yeah. Yeah, we spend a lot of time with them.
Okay. I know there may be more council discussion, but we do have a few blue cards on this item. So do we have any other questions of, of staff before we proceed to hearing from the blue cards? Okay, thank you very much. We have four blue cards, I'll just take them in the, in the order that I have them. I'm sorry, Janice, you put a question mark down. Did I compel you to speak before you were committed to doing that?
No, I wasn't sure.
Okay.
I was hoping to hear my, my neighbors first. Thank you for, I'm not a morning person, but good morning. I'm Janice Genovia, 150 North Wilbur. Who can I address my questions to this morning on this topic?
Why don't you just list them, and then we'll see if we can address, answer them for you?
Okay. I mean, I, I read the ordinance, and I, I think that's wonderful. I appreciate the speed in which you guys have looked at this. I do want to make it very clear that it will not help the downtown area for the most part. I just did some quick goo, well, I spent quite a lot of time in public records and contacting, planning and zoning, and all kinds of, everybody really, to try to find out how many of these homes are in, in the square mile. And Christine Zulanka at Planning and Zoning said they used to keep a list, but they apparently had some kind of a lawsuit, and they found out that other cities don't keep a list. So there's no longer any kind of list, which concerns me, because whoever wants to open up one of these houses with five people or less, they fill out one form, and they pay $1,000. So somebody's getting those forms. But in a real quick Google search that I did, I got more than 50 of these homes in the 85201 and 85203 zip code area on my phone like that. And in doing my research, I found out that the apartment lined up to my $50,000 pool over here, 151 Hibbert, is a psychiatric hospital now. I did not know that. I was not happy to find that. This ordinance that you wrote is a great ordinance, and I really think it has a lot of good features, but we, the places that are setting up in our district are five or less. They are, they start with six, and then when they find out the regulation, so the parole beds are five, arras is five, so it won't protect us at all. And so one of the questions that I had, one of the problems that I see with this ordinance, Mr. Smith, is that we're putting everything under sober home, and there's actually seven different kinds of homes. It is very different to be next door to a developmentally disabled home. You have a Down syndrome individual, a person with cerebral palsy. That's a very different picture than five male adult felons. And so to clump them all together, I think, is a, an issue that needs to be addressed. I think that each type of home needs to be distinguished on its own. And I just, can you speak to that, Jim?
Janice, you're out of time.
Oh, okay.
So if you have other questions, why don't you list them, and then we'll, we'll, we'll try to get answers for you during the course of the discussion.
Okay. I just do want to continue to ask that the city of Mesa consider putting a stay on adding any more of these homes with five people or less until we have protection by the new Senate bill or some other ordinance? We would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Anita Duncan.
My name is Anita Escobedo Duncan. I'm at a new build on 148 North Palmeroy, and we just have moved in a week ago. And we went through a lot to get our permit. It's taken us a year to get to the point we're at. And a lot of my questions have been answered. I'm concerned about the, I know we have a vulnerable set of population with our sober living homes, but we also have vulnerable, excuse me, population with our seniors who live in the neighborhood, and our children who live in the neighborhood as well. So hopefully, we'll be addressing that. Some of the questions I have have already been answered, but my main question is, how are you going to differentiate all of these different types of homes with what Janice said, with the correctional transitional housing facilities that I think are zoned in, I saw in your zoning, to halfway houses, to the sober living homes, to boarding homes? How are you going, are they all classified differently with different definitions, and, and are they all going to be addressed? Someone mentioned, well, all of our homes are six homes in our neighborhood. We could actually then make them into sober living homes. We wouldn't do that to each other if there's no guidelines as to, you know, five or less, one right after the other, after the other. But we wouldn't do that to our neighbors. We're longtime residents there, most of us. So that's what I was wondering about, the different types of homes and how they're going to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Well, we will address that question of Mr. Smith.
Barbara Sut, Barbara Valenzuela Sutfin. I live at 1910 East Maryland Avenue, Mesa, Arizona. Some of my questions have already been answered, but I still have a question about a correctional transitional housing facility. And I'm wondering if the, the house on 138 would fall under that category? Because these gentlemen are being released from prison, and then they're going into this halfway house. And that's the way it was described on Valjean's website. So correctional transitional housing facilities have different standards by which they must, they must establish themselves, according to the, to the, the city code that, the city code that is now in, in force, not the new one. And according to them, they shouldn't be in a residential setting. It's, I think, Chapter 31, 11, yeah, 113112 on your zoning ordinance. And, and they're not allowed to be within 500 feet of a preschool or a kindergarten, or a park, or a church. Now, within the 500-feet area, we have two parks, well, mostly the park across the street, the firefighter, the one that's right next to the firefighter's building. And then there's a YMCA across the street. Right next to the, the YMCA is the Presbyterian Church, and the Presbyterian Church houses a Head Start facility. So if we go strictly by what is written already in the code, it appears to me that that house would not meet the qualifications for that particular site. The other consideration that I've taken, that I've been thinking about, that we need to explore here, is that the house is only, I think, 816 square feet. So if five men, because they're going to meet, they're going to meet the five-man minimum, okay? Plus a manager that's supposed to be there 24/7, how are they going to fit in all those people? It is a very small house with only one bathroom. So that's another consideration. And if I were looking at it as a parent, having my child in a situation like that, I would be a little bit upset, because that's a, that's a very small setting. I mean, that's almost the size of a small prison cell. When you look at it, when they're going to put two, two beds per bedroom, and there's only two bedrooms, one bath, and a small living room that's combined with a dining room, and a very tiny kitchen. So, and I'm also concerned about the fact that, will they receive the proper follow-up for their, for their problems? Granted, they are close to the light rail, but the light rail doesn't go to the, I think he mentioned in his website, that people will be getting some kind of help from community bridges, and community bridges is located off of Broadway in Bellevue. So the light rail doesn't go that way. So they'll be having to either ride a bicycle or walk. It's true that the parole, parole offices are close to that site, but there's a lot of considerations that need to be taken place. If these, if you're just looking at how the men are going to be treated, and how we, as a community, are going to be impacted, I think in this particular situation, we buy... a community, are going to be impacted, I think in this particular situation, we both lose. The only person that's going to come out the winner is the person that actually is going to run and manage and collect the money from those people. So I would like those things to be taken into consideration, because I would like to know that we are thinking about everybody in the, in this particular community, not just the residents there, but also the people that are going to be housed there. And I am, the site is very small, and I don't know where, if they were to have counseling, where they would hold their counseling meetings. So those are just food for thought. And I would like to know, if anybody can answer the question, do they fall under the CTHF category at present time?
Thank you, Barbara. Your time is up, but we will address that question.
Thank you.
Last card I have is from Jen Duff.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I really just have a question rather than a statement, and it is regarding the definition of so many similar homes that are impacting our neighborhoods in downtown. So we're having to define, you know, regulate and registration, to look at all of these different types of homes and take them into consideration, and how we approach that and how they affect the neighborhoods. So some of them are, you know, the sober living homes, which we're talking about this morning, halfway houses, which is a transitional place for felons, recovery houses, three-quarter houses, the correctional transition housing facilities that were just brought up. So there's, we can regulate and look at sober living houses, but we also have to look at the definition of these others and how they impact, and look at it comprehensively. So that's just my only comment, to look at it and the impact in neighborhoods overall. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen. So, Mr. Smith, there were a few questions raised there. I don't know if you were writing them down, but...
I think I have them.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and take a crack at what you just heard, please?
Thanks, Mayor and Council. And I hear the frustrations of the community, just, you know, that's why we took this up so quickly. The reason why we did structured sober living, maybe sort of the question that was sort of, why did we distinguish between the different types, is because that's what the state statute authorized municipalities to do. And so that's what we're doing there. And the sort of the distinguishing between the different types and the definition sort of flowing together, so I'll handle, maybe both those questions together. So we did structured sober living, because that's what the state statute authorizes, and we followed. And if you look at the definition, it follows largely what's within the state definition. As far as the definitions, we have looked at that, and we do intend to come back as part of our process to refine the definitions. As to a particular house in both the definitions, the problem with, with the definitions, and that this is what I think the community struggles, and it's not unique to me, so it's, with all communities, is this, is that you can have somebody that's coming out of, out of jail or prison that might qualify for the correctional transitional housing, but they're also recovering from drug and alcohol. And so they're then considered to be disabled under federal law. And so they'll, and if they house only those types of people, then they're going to qualify as a sober living home. And so this is, if you look at, if you remember sort of like Venn diagrams from school, the problem with the definitions and its intentional is, is because, is that they overlap, and because they have to, because of federal law. And so that's, and you'll see that in other, other communities also, and the concepts of, of both sober living and people coming out of, coming out of correctional facilities. So I don't know whether a particular house would qualify as a structured sober living until you really look at it. And so, but that's inherent in the very nature of it. And, and it's, you know, in large, large part, it's inherent in the nature of the federal law that's been sort of handed down to the state and to municipalities to have to deal with, and the courts that have interpreted it and require us to treat this, just like the other, you know, I read the litany off, and I have, you know, race, color, religion, sex, disability, familiar status, or national origin. And the courts have recognized this to be a disability, so it's put in that same list. And so that's, that's the sort of the limitations that we're within. And so, so I hear the frustrations, but I also, we're looking at the solution that we can within the realm that we have. And so that's why we went with Prescott. The reason why it distinguishes is because it mimics the state's, state statute in large part. As far as the moratorium, in fact, if you remember the case, I, I won't quote it again, the case that I cited back last week, that case, the city did impose a moratorium, and then they, they tried to prevent them. They got sued. It got overturned. They got sued for damages. The damages and attorney's fees were over $9 million in that one lawsuit in that one city, from those structured sober living homes that sued for preventing them from operating for a while. And so, you know, moratorium, the state statute, state statutes allow municipalities to have a moratorium. I'm only aware of one circumstance when it occurs. It's for new build, when you don't have water, or you can show that you cannot provide police or fire. There's all sorts of requirements to make those findings, and then there's limitations after that. And so, so, you know, I've thought about that, and I've looked at it. And so, you know, it's not, it's not because we haven't thought or, or thinking about this. The definitions, we have looked at those, and we, the national, the expert that we're going to hire, we're going to look at that also. But it, the, the, the issue with the definition inherently comes back to the fact that the Venn diagrams overlap. And so we will, we will look to clarify, but realize inherently that's at the core of it, too. And so we are doing as, as much as the other two cities are doing that are looking at structured sober living, to try to address this problem.
Okay. Thank you. So the reason we don't have different rules for the different types of homes, the developmentally disabled versus transitional living...
We do have different definitions. So if you are just a correctional transitional housing, and you, you're not treating people that are qualified as disabled, that is a different type of home, and then that, that is not permitted. And, John, correct?
Mayor, Council, it is different. It does have this description, but it does still start at that base of six residents or more, before it falls into that category. If you are six residents or more, then you are limited to commercial industrial zones, and you have to get a county's use permit. But if you're five, which we understand the one to be on Pomeroy, then you're not covered, and those can basically go anyplace, just like the other types of group homes and group residential that we're talking about.
So we do have different rules for different categories of homes, but one of the things they have in common is this trigger of six or more residents?
And like I said, we're going to go back and look at that.
Okay. Mr. Luna.
Are there other homes that are regulated by the state?
Yes, I don't have the litany of those, but yes.
Perhaps we might want to get that, see what is available, what, what regulations do occur. I'll send a question on homes less than five people. So will the, the new Senate legislation, will that deal with homes less than six people?
I think it can. It's ultimately what the regs say, and that's why hopefully the public becomes involved with that process. The statute doesn't get down to that granular level.
One of the speakers a moment ago said that there are, there is some licensing going on. I don't know if it's from the city, or the state, or the county, where you write a check for $1,000, you can start a facility. That's not us that they're writing a check for $1,000, too, is it?
I don't, you know, that's, I don't know if...
Do we know?
Mayor, Council, that reference may have been to the group homes for the handicapped in the group homes. We do register those. I don't, I'm not sure what the fee is for that registration process. And so we, because we do have that 1,200-foot separation. So we do look at that, make sure they're maintaining that, but other than that...
Okay.
We don't maintain a list of those. There are some basic inspections of those when they go in, but it's very minimal.
And the occupancy trigger for that would be six as well?
Correct.
Okay. All right. A couple of things I would just suggest is that not, again, this is an ordinance that is in place until the, the state ordinance, the state statute clicks in. The last time we talked about this, I told you that we're aggressively going to encourage the state to not wait the 18 months or two years that, that they have to work on these. At the League of Cities and Towns Convention, we're adopting resolutions, and I would encourage you to join us in lobbying the state to be timely in adopting these regulations as quickly as possible, so that, and then, as Mr. Smith indicated, if the state regulations come back and mimic, you know, the six or more that the cities are using, I'm not sure that, that the folks in neighborhoods are going to feel like there's been a whole lot accomplished. So there's, maybe the lobbying efforts ought to be, you know, on two prongs, to be as restrictive as possible and to be as quickly as possible adopted. And I promise you, we will join in that effort. The other thing I would just say to neighborhoods that are concerned is, nothing, either in the state statute or the city ordinance, makes illegal behavior legal. So if you see things in your neighborhood that are not appropriate, call the police. And if there is illegal activity going on in these homes, call the police. Let's be very aggressive in enforcing the law. And we encourage you to do that, because, again, we don't want to allow or encourage or promote any criminal activity in our community. But I guess that's, this is all we can do for the time being, is my impression. Other, other comments? Yes, Mr. Freeman?
I think, I think as we go forward, we talk about the residents, but we also need to remember there's a house manager, so it's always the resident plus one. And I have a concern, you know, with residents bringing up that you have an 860-square-foot home with six people there, and that's kind of tight living quarters. So I don't know what, we'll just have to, this is a work in progress, and I appreciate staff moving forward rapidly on this. So there'll be other comments from council in the future, I'm sure.
So again, the ordinance that we're adopting, are we, when are we doing that?
You're introducing it Monday, and then you'll adopt it on the ninth.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So there'll be more opportunity for public comment Monday, and again, on the ninth, when we do that. If there's nothing else, we'll move on to the next agenda item for today, and that's to acknowledge receipt of boards and minutes. Is there a motion to that effect? Thank you. And a second? All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. Next is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Yes?
Pursuant to Section 211B of the Mesa City Charter, and for the sole purpose of triggering the requirements under Section 211B1 and B2, I'm introducing an ordinance to amend the Mesa City Charter to stabilize the city of Mesa utility rates by restricting utility service revenue for use in support of providing utility services and protecting utility service assets, and providing a cap on transfers of utility service revenue to the City of Mesa General Fund, and authorizing the submission of such charter amendment to the electors of the city for adoption in accordance with Mesa City Charter requirements. I'll provide a copy to the city clerk at the conclusion of the meeting.
Thank you very much. I have something to report as well. I attended a meeting yesterday of the MAG organization, and I was pleased to receive an award on behalf of the city for the adoption of the Text 911 program. And I just wanted to give a shout out to our, our police department, and our fire department, and our emergency services dispatch folks who have worked very closely with MAG. For those who may not know, just a few months ago, we acquired the ability to text 911 calls that we didn't have previously, and that, this was done at a regional level. And if you think about it, a lot of younger people are more comfortable texting sometimes than calling, and a lot of people, if they're in an emergency situation, including domestic violence or other scenarios that we can think of, it, it's more effective and more appropriate to text. And so I was pleased to, along with the other cities, receive that award, and I just thought I'd, again, thank those at the city level who were involved in that, and remind us once again that that is a, the ability, an ability that we have now. Yes, Mr. Luna?
I just want to acknowledge Chief Kameli, who, graduate, she will be honorably selected as the Arizona Fire Chiefs Association. Alan Brunacci, Brunaccini? Is that right?
Brunacini.
Brunacini, Fire Chief Officer of the Year for 2018. So we want to acknowledge Mary for...
Very well deserved. I'm sure the National Award is just around the corner, too. Thank you. Thanks.
I just want to welcome the Mesa Sister Cities students. I attended the opening reception. I know our students from Mesa came back recently from their trips in Peru, Canada, New Zealand, China, I think Mexico, and we have students who travel from those same countries here in Mesa, and they're here for the next three weeks. So just want to welcome, they woke up bright and early today to attend our study session. So thank you, and thanks for the Mesa City, Sister Cities Board and families who make this happen. Great work that you all do to make this program every year. So thank you, and welcome to City of Mesa.
Thank you, and thank you for representing us, for those of you who travel to the other cities as well. Mr. Freeman?
It's been a busy week. We had an open house in District 1, and it was well-attended. We had it over at Fire Station 218. We had probably 30-plus residents in the area attend. We had great staff there as well, answered lots of questions, and we, I just appreciate everybody working so hard, especially the council assistant and putting this all together.
And I was pleased to join you in another community meeting with the Lehigh Crossing residents a couple of days ago, that, again, thank you to the staff for facilitating that. It was well-attended, and I think it was a very productive meeting. Thank you, Council. Any additional reports on meetings or conferences attended? Mr. Brady, can you help us with the schedule of future meetings?
Yes. Mayor, Council, we're getting close to our summer break. We will have a, our meeting on Monday, July 2. There will be some items, there'll be reviews of charter positions will happen prior to these council meetings, so we'll have an early start for the study session on July 2. There will be no study session on July 5, so we'll be reviewing the July 9 agenda on Monday, July 2. And then our final council meeting before the summer break will be Monday, July 9, and that will also have an early start date for council to have an opportunity to meet with charter-appointed positions to do their reviews also on that day. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. If there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting? Thank you, Mr. Luna. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.